[Applause] [Music] 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 Good evening. Today is Tuesday, October the 28th, 2025. This is a regular session of the School Board Trustees of School City of East Chicago and the time now is 6:12. The place is Harrison Elementary School, 4411 Magoon Avenue in East Chicago, Indiana. This is also being shown via live stream at www.scec.k12i.in.us. This is a meeting of the school board and public for the purpose of conducting the school's corporation's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Trustee Gomez? Trustee Smith?
Present.
Trustee Gomez? I'm sorry, trustee Rodriguez?
Present.
Trustee Taylor?
Present.
Madam President Gibson-King?
Present. The pledge of allegiance? Please rise. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
President, please.
Okay.
I mean ROTC.
ROTC.
Yes.
Hologuard.
Please rise.
[Music] [Applause] [Music] Yes, sorry. Harry Ellis. Forward, huh! Present, go!
Present to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Order, huh!
Madam Secretary, now we'll go to the mission statement from Superintendent Dr. Bornet.
Good evening. The School City of East Chicago educates and empowers every student through aligned instruction, meaningful partnerships, and differentiated practices to ensure success in life, college, career, and civic engagement.
Certification number executive session, Indiana code 5-14-1, dot 5-6-1. Can I get an approval of the agenda?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session.
No, no.
It's just a motion for the agenda itself.
Yes. Agenda.
Yeah, that's it.
I make a motion for to approve the agenda.
My second motion.
Trustee Smith, trustee Rodriguez. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President Gibson-King?
Yes, I'm sorry. Were there any comments from the audience about the agenda? Okay, now we'll go to the presentation, 3.01, presentation for Harrison Elementary School. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, CTE, I'm sorry. CTE, Mrs. Rodriguez? All right, next, all right, all right. [Music] [Applause] 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 [Music] He wanted her to go first. I forgot he told me to go first because somebody's in the hospital.[967.92]
What you see in yellow are the things that I'm working on, what you see in green, I have a solid plan for. So, starting with the first one, capstone courses are not being offered was a concern for the state of Indiana. We offer one capstone course, and that is in education professions. Currently, right now, we are working on offering courses in the spring for students. So, the classes that we will offer in the spring will possibly be Ms. Alexander's class, fire science, engineering, and culinary. These are possibilities. I have a strong connection that we will be able to do Alexander's digital design class and possibly build a connection with the fire department so that we can have certain students do a capstone work-based learning course in the spring. Low enrollment and eight out of the 32 programs. I'll explain the terminology there. The terminology is that programs are electives. What you would look at a course offering and say is an elective, we look at is programs in the CTE world. So, the terminology they use is programs. Eight out of those 32 programs that we offer at the high school had low enrollment. So, what we've been doing to strategize for that is build a marketing and branding plan. I've been working with Jeremy and Emily on that. The three that are green, the funds need to be zeroed out. We are, I've developed a plan with Dr. Yenders and Dr. Bornet to do quarterly budgets and report that in our executive summaries. For recommendation of working with the fiscal staff on Perkins invoices, I am now attending budget committee meetings. So, those things can be discussed in our budget committee meetings, and I'm meeting with my, with the fiscal staff and my CTE staff bi-weekly. The last one, using an asset tracking tool, I've created a budgeting tool that I share with the clerk and federal grants coordinator. Program quality. What you see on the board is a website called Data Explorer that is with the Indiana Commissioner of High of Education. Program quality, they use four things to identify quality. There's possible six, but four for sure. Dual credits, industry certifications, work-based learning, and CTSOs, which are student organizations for career and tech ed. They use this as a measurement tool. The highest score you can get is a 25. The highest score we have is in our culinary program, 16, and education, 16. What I can tell you after investigating these programs is that your work-based learning in education is what drives those numbers. And culinary is the enrollment and your dual credits that are being offered. Next slide. There you go. So, I'm sure that the, that leads me right into enrollment. So, I will identify the highs and the lows in our enrollment. Our highs, criminal justice, 136, culinary is 260, and fire sciences, 136. Our lows are accounting, computer science, marketing and sales, medical assistant, and pharmacy tech. Those enrollments are low, and then we also have those three that are listed as high. Next slide. Some demographic data to share. We have a total of 500-plus African-American students enrolled. Again, another 500 for Hispanic and EL students, and also have 362 students that are enrolled in, that are special education, that are enrolled in CTE classes. Next slide. So, our strategic outlook. I have it sectioned by middle school, high school, and elementary school intentionally because, again, this is a K through 12 vision. So, starting with central, we need to start off by addressing the audit, which is what we've been doing in the last three months. Those five areas of concern. This year is the year to write the CLNA and also write the Perkins grant. So, you see the indicators under the CLNA. You have, again, dual credits, industry certifications, work-based learning, CTSOs, which is student organizations. I have to develop an advisory committee. I have to write a federal grant and also track data for that federal grant with our numbers from, from each school. That is in the 38 Perkins reports. Another goal for a central high school is for us to embed work-based learning and school links together. The goal right now for our scope and sequence is to start off with a career interest survey, which we've already put out this year. Yes, you can share the survey. Thank you, Dr. Yenders. You could go to the next slide. In this survey, I've been working with Jeremy on, we've been trying to, again, market and brand Career and Tech Ed. So, as you're receiving that, I'll give you a little bit of time to digest because I want to stand to the 10 minutes I've been given. And as we move forward, the plan for, for dual credit, which is a part of the school improvement plan, is to push forward with trying to get the programs that do not offer dual credit, dual credit. There are programs that do not offer dual credit. At this time, the four you see on the screen, computer science, digital design, education, and radio and TV do not offer dual credit. I am in an emerging stage right now with Ivy Tech to move forward with digital design and radio, TV to get onboard with dual credit for those programs. And I did make a concerted effort with all four programs with Ivy Tech this year, but we were told no for computer science and education. For industry certifications, the goal is to increase the number of all programs that we offer, offering an industry certification. Currently, each program can, can offer one certification. They can offer one, but we've only offered two overall in the last couple of years. Might have been four at the most. What my goal is, is to make sure that I connect my teachers with what industry certifications they can offer and just get the ball rolling. Anything we do is better than what we've been doing. And so, if I can get all of my programs to start off with trying, trying out one and attempting one, the state would absolutely be happy. Last, but not least, work-based learning. Increase the number of opportunities through partnerships, course offering, and industry certifications. So, let me make a connection for you that you don't see on the screen. Industry certifications opens up the door for work-based learning. Most industries want, want the students to come in with an industry certification. So, they should have earned it in the classroom, and they come out into the workforce with that certification. They come to the job with that certification. All right, next slide. So, CTSOs, currently, we offer two. We offer DECA and National Tech Honor Society. We're trying to combine DECA, well, not DECA, National Tech Honor Society with our future-ready program that's happening at the end of the year. The goal of that program is to celebrate students through a CTE student celebration and recognize those students that have received dual credits, industry certifications, work-based learning opportunities, and anything they've done in CTSOs. So, the accountability piece, I know it's a lot, forgive me, but it, but, but I, but, but this is a lot because this is, this is all new to being presented. So, the Perkins grant. There is a reserve grant, and there is a current Perkins grant that we already have. First grant, we are applying for this year for the first time. In the past, we have not applied for a reserve grant. It is worth $150,000. And the goals under that grant is to survey students to find out where they would like to be in their career interest as they enter high school, partner with Ivy Tech, and offer the following programs. Automotive, construction, advanced manufacturing, and welding. These are the plans that are going to take place. Also, work with Ivy Tech for a 10th grade program that they have to expose students to those same four programs. So, we, we're in the process of writing that grant. We do not have that $150,000 yet, but we will be, once we write it and submit, we will know by December 25th whether that, a grant has been awarded to us. What current grant we do have is the Carl Perkins Grant. Currently, our CTE funding that we're bringing in is about $450,000 plus. We only receive a portion of that back. That portion is given to us through Perkins Grant. Currently, right now, we have, we have been awarded $155,000 for the grant for this school year. The priority of spending this grant needs to reflect our students first. Multiple times, I'm reviewing what we have, and we need to make sure we shift the narrative to students first in our spending of the dollars. Advisory Committee is the next column over, and we are having advisory committee on November 20th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. The goal was to, I hate to say it, but not overload you all, but not have you come out twice. The work session, I believe, is at 6:00 o'clock that night. So, we are trying to have that, that advisory committee from 3:00 to 5:00, and you all are welcome to come and attend. Next slide. I'll give you a moment to digest. I know it's been a lot. But these are the companies that I've been working with for, some of these are emerging, some of these are existing, and some of these are initiating. So, we are working right now with the first column. We're emerging right now with the second column and initiating with the last column. And we currently are working with Jeremy on a work-based learning flyer. It's in draft. So, what you see, there's some things that need to be fixed on it, but what you see is a draft of where we are. That will be sent out to businesses in the community, in East Chicago. First of all, the ones that are already on the list, but then we will be sending them out to more so we bring in more connections for students so that we can offer work-based learning. Next slide. Again, Jeremy and Emily, we, I've been working with for marketing and branding. The goal in marketing and branding, first of all, we've been meeting monthly to develop a vision for CTE. The flyers that you have up there are some of the things that you see we've worked on. The CTE course offerings, that survey has already been put out to 9th and 10th graders at Central High School. I have about over 100 students that have responded, and we want to make sure that 8th graders get a hold of this same information. We have a CTE advisory flyer that we're working on. The goal that Jeremy and Emily and I have been working on the hardest has been branding for the 13 programs. Each program should be an identity of its own when we're talking about marketing and branding. And we've been working on getting information for that from our teachers so that we can market and brand each program individually. We have a billboard that's going up in rotation, and we have a Facebook page for Career and Tech Ed. Next slide. Professional development. Currently, since I've started, we have held about two meetings a month with staff, and these are the meetings that are listed. We had a two, three district PD meetings and then three department meetings so far. I would share with you the agenda, but I guarantee you the presentation tonight. I've talked about all of these things tonight with the staff at every one of the meetings, starting with the audit. They are fully aware of the audit. They're fully aware of enrollment. They're fully aware of, of the 38. So, I've been sharing a lot of these things with, with the CTE teachers. Next slide. This past September, Ms. Dotson and I attended the IAC Conference, and this slide follows up to that conference with, with things we're putting in place. We gave ourselves a timeline and goals from the conference. It was my first time as CTE director. It was also Ms. Dotson's first time as work-based learning coordinator. And she had the opportunity to meet with other work-based learning coordinators across the state of Indiana. I'm familiar with other CTE directors. However, I got a chance as director for the first time to meet with other CTE directors in that capacity. So, a few things up here, we've already tackled, one of which is identifying industry certifications and trying to make sure that those are documented correctly. Supporting, and supporting Ms. Dotson with building relationships with the local Chamber of Commerce and making sure that we're working with Mr. Tokars on capstone courses, pathways being offered, ensuring CTE central staff is trained on interns. These things are the follow-up from the IAC Conference because those were major concerns that we learned about, but also things that we needed to capitalize on. Ms. Dotson, some of her tasks are already done since the conference. That was develop the survey, the work-based learning flyer, go to a trade show, and increase work-based learning opportunities. Next slide. I have attended quite a bit of meetings since my time in the last three months, and so that is a glance of all the meetings that I've attended, including the disclaimer at the bottom where it says, "Attending the School Building, Millions Curriculum Cabinet Budget Economic Development" and a few Chamber of Commerce meetings. Next slide. I promise I'm done. Some helpful insights is, even though this was a lot tonight, and I'm pretty sure I overwhelmed you with the amount of information, what I do want to say, my disclaimer, is that it takes a while, like a business plan with CTE, to get it going and seeing results. It may take two or three years to see some of the results that you, that you will see over this year that have been implemented. It will take about two or three years to see the positive results, but you'll see them go in the right direction. But like a business plan, five years to sustain. I've been here for three months. I want you to know that even if I've made some immediate changes, I guarantee you they were in the best interest of students. And last, but not least, please trust the process. Please trust the process. It's a CTE phrase. It's a STEM phrase, but it is a true phrase for me. Please trust the process. It's, it's, it's gonna be good, but it's gonna take those two or three years or five years to see the results. And I want to end with my students. There's a video up there. I'm pretty sure I'm gonna say I don't have time to play it unless Jeremy push play. Okay, we got time. Go ahead. Ms. Alexander is the only one I didn't show a picture of, so I threw a video in for her. What you see is homecoming, and she's using the drone. I zoomed in on the drone. You can see the drone. And I tried to do a two-for-one because we have JRTC right there in the frame. But she is using the drone. The, the goal is to get students trained and certified so that they can use the drones as well at events. And I really want to thank my staff, want to thank my, first of all, I thank my leaders that have been supportive of me and guiding me through CTE as I've come in as a director. And I want to thank my teachers who have been rock stars. They have been rock stars. I've had a tough time in the beginning only because I'm new, but as they are starting to see the vision that I've showed you all tonight, they have been jumping on board. And they, and Priscilla and Ms. Basely, I want to shout out to them. Thank you very much for giving me this time today. I appreciate you. And do you have any questions or concerns?
Yeah, I'm trying to find that page. How many programs, CTE programs do you have?
So, going back, there's about 13. You'll see more, again, you'll see more on, you'll see more listed. It's about 12, yeah, 12 or 13 programs. You'll, you'll see more in the enrollment, on that enrollment slide, you'll see more because the way that they give us the data back, they break it down a little bit further. It's not by program, it's by class or by, by program. When they say program, it's by class. So, you'll see more in the data bar, but we have about 12 or 13 pathways. So, I would define a pathway as a student can complete principals, concentrator A, concentrator B. I'll say it again. They have to take a principals course, concentrator A, concentrator B, and then they have to take a capstone course, which is what we need to increase upon. Capstone is the segue to work-based learning. Industry certifications is the segue to work-based learning. So, doing those two, which is what the state has told us that we need to do, is the segue to moving, increasing our program qualities into that 20 number that you saw on the board.
So, how many do we have now? I know we have a list of them here, but we don't have all these, we do not have all these CTE programs.
Yes, ma'am.
We do?
Yes.
We have all 12 of these?
The ones at the bottom, the ones at the bottom are interests. We have a strong interest in construction, automotive, advanced manufacturing, and welding. When I survey the students as I walk through the hallways, I ask them what they want to be. I guarantee you, I've had five different students say construction. Some have said welding, some have said automotive. So, we want to give voice to the students. That's what I would like to do through CTE. We need to offer the courses that they are interested in, and we can do that if we partner with Ivy Tech East Chicago.
Okay, and how many are dual credit?
All are dual credit except computer science, education, radio, TV, and digital design as of today.
So, I know you've been here for a short period of time.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you going to be utilizing the Ivy Tech down the street because we have culinary art there? We have other courses down there that's on here. And they will be going down to Ivy Tech.
I would like to see culinary go because they have an open kitchen.
Yes.
And it is not being used. And so, I've had this discussion with Ivy Tech, and they are onboard. We just need to have a meeting and set up those logistics and write them into our MOU with memorandum of understanding. Trying not to use acronyms because everybody doesn't know what they are. No, 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 I'm talking about the audience as well. I don't know who knows what, so let me be correct in using correct terminology.
Yeah, are there any more questions from the board, Madam President?
Yes, trustee, right, please.
So, I see you have, you have DECA as one of the partners, which is, which is awesome because they focuses a lot on marketing and hospitality.
Yes.
Hotel hospitality, things like that. Have you, have we looked at possibly engaging in any of those areas that they focus on in terms of hospitality, marketing, some, some other areas that they normally finance is a big one too that they focus on.
Can you clarify the question? Only because we offer marketing and we offer culinary.
Right, I do see that. So, my focus would be more on the hospitality aspect. The reason why, the reason why I say that is because I had a discussion of one of, one of the individuals or one of the employees over at the county, and since they're going to be building hotels and things like that, the convention center, they're going to be looking for employees that are pretty much in that certification rate.
So, Dr. Yenders, Dr. Yenders is right here in my ear. We've already had this conversation that there is a, that they are building a convention center. And so, hospitality tourism is already embedded in the culinary program. What we need to provide is time for our culinary teachers to do from beginning to end. So, in the setting that they have right now, okay, so a student might take, during fifth hour today, they might take culinary arts, and then they need to take another CTE course where they're taking it out of sequence. So, they don't get the experience of start to finish of a project. We're talking about prep. We're talking about cooking those items and then doing hospitality tourism, which is the preparation, presenting it, being able to know where your place setting is supposed to go. All of those things come with doing a beginning-to-end set. Currently, the teachers right now might have a student fifth hour. They might have another student, that same student first hour, and that student might come back to them again seventh hour. That's some of what the students are experiencing. That teacher needs to go from beginning to end with that student in a block of time. And so, it would be nice if we could partner with Ivy Tech. And I know I'm being, I'm predicting what the expectation will be that we can partner with them for the open kitchen that they have, where Ms. Rivera, our culinary teacher, our secondary, our second-year culinary teacher could possibly partner with Ivy Tech with us, and then we can send those students over to Ivy Tech to do a full beginning-to-end prep. So, to answer, I hope I answered your question. Just wanted to make sure I answered it.
Are there any more questions from the board?
Madam President, I just want to make a comment.
Yes.
I just want to acknowledge the fact that I could tell a lot of time and energy has been put into this program, into this vision, and I see the vision. In such a short amount of time, I'm very impressed. And I don't, I think, I don't want us to overlook the fact that this program consists of K through 12, not what we're historically used to, which is just high school. So, that is huge, and that's going to be impactful, and I'm committed to trusting the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, trustee Smith.
Okay, Ms., I would like to just say, I would just like to say that for you to be here for just, for just three months, I see a marked improvement in this program. It had laid dormant for such a long time. And, but in three months, you've put together, and I see this is a lot of hard work, and you have a team that's working with you. And I know it takes time to build a program, but me seeing this, I know that you said three years, but I know with your team, it's gonna manifest just a little bit earlier than we think. So, I'm really proud of you because this program could go, and I know could go further. This is what I want. So, if anything that I could possibly help you do to take this to another level, I am willing to pull my sleeve up and help you do this because this is what we need in our district. And like I said, this program had laid dormant for such a long time, and all of these programs that you're having, that you have listed, I'm very, very happy for you. Now, some things I do have. I'm gonna talk to you about that later. But we want to just, I just want to let you know to start off with, you're doing a very excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you all, and thank you for trusting me with, with the programs, with the CTE programs.
Thank you for your time. Now, we'll go to Harrison Elementary School.
Good evening. Everybody can hear me?
Oh, Ms. Broadnax, I think you took our papers.
Went into a little bit of a panic there. On behalf of the admin team here at Harrison, all the teachers and paras that we have here in the audience, those, as Ms. Patty Doce say, that are watching on TV land, and those of us that are already in their pajamas, we would like to welcome you to Harrison, our very colorful school board, community members, welcome. We hope that you had an opportunity on your way in to stop in and see our undefeated volleyball team in action.
Yes.
We're very excited to be hosting elementary sports in the elementary building, so it was very exciting for us this year. Again, my name is Linda Pedalum, the principal here at Harrison. Myself and Ms. Marzalak, the assistant principal, will be presenting for you this evening. As with every presentation and every meeting that we have within Harrison, we start with our mission and our vision, which is on the next slide. We've already read those, so we'll move past those. And every morning, students across the district start with our student pledge, which I know you have seen at other meetings, so we'll proceed there. Our first slide is enrollment. Currently, as of, I believe, Friday, we have 374 students enrolled here at Harrison. Our numbers fluctuate. We go up sometimes to 4, 415. We usually don't go lower than 370, 375. Our EL population consists of 139 students. Our exceptional learners, 53 students. And our duly identified students, meaning that they're both EL and exceptional students, are 16. This is our I-Learn data from the 24-25 school year, so this is last year's data. It's data that we have all seen in various meetings, but we wanted to make sure to include it in our presentation. So, just to kind of summarize the numbers there, in mathematics, we had 23% of our students at or above proficiency and 15% of our students in English Language Arts. This year, we are, again, taking checkpoints, I-Learn checkpoints, but this year, the data is coming in much faster. So, for example, today, our students took the first checkpoint in I-Learn, and we had the data by the end of the day for most students. So, we do have an exciting announcement, but I'm going to leave that for Dr. Bornet to share because we are just over the roof with, with some of the numbers that we've seen coming in so far. To talk about attendance, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Marzalak, our assistant principal.
Good evening. We're proud to share that our school currently holds the highest attendance rate in the district as highlighted by Dr. Bornet at the last board meeting. So far this school year, our overall attendance rate is 95%. In August, we had a 95% attendance rate, followed by a 96% attendance rate in September, with more than 170 students achieving perfect attendance in each month. As of today, our October attendance rate is 94%. And we are especially proud to recognize the 84 students who received perfect attendance for the entire first quarter. To encourage students to come to school every day and on time, we offer several, attendance incentives, including monthly and quarterly perfect attendance certificates, Jeans Day passes, book vending machine tokens, and freezer pops, just to name a few. In addition to the incentives we offer, our school truancy team regularly meets with parents to address absences and tardy concerns that we have. In addition to the incentives we offer, our school truancy team regularly meets with parents to address absences and tardy concerns that we have. Our first quarter perfect attendance students are proudly displayed just outside the auditorium alongside our A and AB honor roll students, celebrating their commitment to excellence both in attendance and academics.
All right. And then our school improvement goals. Each year, the the team at Harrison meets to come up with three, at least three, school improvement goals. This year, two of them are centered around ILEARN proficiency, and one is centered around the social emotional needs of our students. So the first one is a goal to increase math proficiency on the ILEARN assessment by 5%. The second is to increase English Language Arts proficiency by 5% on ILEARN. And then the last one is our social emotional goal. Through our MTSS framework, which we have continued to strengthen through the years, we want to use our Panorama survey results. So every year, our students take a Panorama survey in grades three through six, and it tells us a little bit about how they're feeling at school, how they're feeling about academics, how they're feeling about their peers. So we really wanted to utilize that data this year. And there was one specific area within Panorama survey data that we wanted to target, which is insight. And insight kind of encompasses a big variety of things, but it really is student belonging and students students having an adult that they can turn to here at the school, as well as students being invested in their academics. So it's a big window, but we want to see an increase in that score on Panorama by 5% as well. And in our presentation, you're going to see a little bit of what we have done thus far this school year, already trying to reach that goal. The presentation was prepared by our Digital Media Club. So Ms. Broadnax, you will have, oh, she left. She will have some students that are ready for Ms. Alexander's class because they do our HNN, Harrison News Network, morning announcements each morning. And today, because we didn't want to keep the kids late here for the presentation, we have a special report with the highlights of the fun activities that have happened so far this year. I'm going to take the microphone over there.
Good evening and welcome to the Harrison Elementary Fun News Update. We're excited to share some of the amazing things happening at our school so far.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's right, Zain. Our Cardinals have been busy learning, leaning, and showing school spirit. Tonight, we will take you through some of the highlights so far this year.
Let's get started in one of our favorite spots, the Harrison School Garden.
We are here in our school's garden where children have been learning about plants, pollinators, and environment. We grew peppers, tomatoes, and radishes, and we even learn about compost and make new little friends. Our garden helps us learn science in real life. It's also a peaceful time to spend time outside. Next up, students and family join together for Walk to School Day.
It was a beautiful morning for walking to school. We met up with friends, got some exercise, and started the active this one.
It was the first time doing this. We had a lot of students, parents, and community members join us. We even had help from the East Chicago Police Department, and we are very thankful for the support.
I liked walking with my friends and teachers. They made the morning extra special.
Joshua Harrison started something new, House Day. Each student belongs to a house that focuses on teamwork, kindness, and school spirit. This year, during our House Day, we broke into groups to focus on this month's character trait, trustworthiness.
We also did a community service project, make a pocket hug to share with chemo and radiation patients at St. Krastland's Hospital. We even made a pocket for each one of our school board members this evening. If you want to learn more about our school houses, you can visit our website.
Our first House Day was amazing. We played games, worked together, and showed our pride in our house colors.
October means it's time for the Great Apple Crunch.
Our whole school crunched into apples together to celebrate healthy eating in our local farm.
It was so loud when everyone crunched it together, and the apples were so delicious.
This fall, Harrison had the honor of hosting elementary volleyball games.
It was great to welcome other schools to our gym. There was a lot of excitement, and we won our first game. It was awesome playing in front of our home crowd. Go Cardinals!
Our girls' underrun team has been training hard.
The team meets after school to try to figure out a 5K record on November 1st. We're learning teamwork, confidence, and healthy habits.
Learning from my team makes me feel strong and proud. I can't wait to run 4 or 5K.
Another great club is back, Girl Scouts.
Girl Scouts are learning friendship, leadership, and ways to help our community.
We do fun projects, earn badges, and it's so much fun.
October is Fire Safety Month, and we have special visitors from the East Chicago Fire Department.
Firefighters show us their gear and talk about fire safety and let us see their truck.
My favorite part is where the firefighters put on all their equipment. It's so heavy.
Our playground has some new additions, Buddy Bentes.
Thanks to donations from E.H.O.'s Boarding Camp, Iris Care Charity, and the East Chicago Evening Lions Club, our school now has special benches where students can sit if they need a friend to play with.
If someone sits there, it means they're looking for a buddy. It helps everyone feel included.
And guess what? Harrison recently won another bench in a contest.
Next, let's talk about our very famous Harrison friend, our school goose, Gustavo.
Gustavo has become a part of the Harrison family. He participates in our events and dresses up and makes appearances in our announcements.
Gustavo is fun. He's like our honorary school mascot.
We have two exciting events coming up for our Cardinals and families.
First, trunk or treat on October 29th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Come in costumes, enjoy candy, and check out fun decorated car trunks.
And then we will celebrate Dia de los Muertos with a beautiful offender where families can bring pictures of loved ones who have passed. There will also be music from a trio band, And Dulce, and chocolate for everyone to enjoy.
It's a wonderful way to celebrate our loved ones and culture as a community.
What a great start to our school year. Full of learning, fun, and community.
Thank you to all the teachers, staff, families, and community members who helped make Harrison such a special place.
From the Cardinal News crew, thanks for watching and go Cardinals! Adios!
Oh, man. Yeah.
As you can see, we're off to a very exciting start. We're working towards reaching that insight goal of making students feel belong, that they belong to the school and to the community. There is, I placed for each of you a little pocket hug, so you can see that was one of the community service projects that we did for our House Day. We did donate about 300 of them to chemo and radiation patients at the hospital just to kind of give the community a, hey, we're here, we see you. I think it's also very important for our students to learn that giving back to the community is essential. We can't just take from our community partners. We also learn to to give back. So we did prepare one for each of you to take and to keep in your pocket. There's a message from at least one student on the back as well.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. That concludes our presentation. If there are any questions, please.
No, I just want to say I did enjoy the Crunch Apple Day with you all the day I was here.
That was a surprise, but we were glad that you were here to partake in those festivities with us. It is important because a lot of the kids don't realize that the apples don't disappear in the cafeteria, right? So the apples that we ate that day came from a local farm in La Porte called Garwood Orchard. So they did learn about where where it came from, a little bit about how they're grown and things like that. It's important for them to learn that it's right here in our backyard, the food that they're eating.
I just want to say, great presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I wish your CTE director was here because I think one of the items should be news media.
Well, we're ready for advanced classes. We're going to send them over to the high school right now.
That was awesome.
Thank you. I really, I do want to give credit to Mr. Adams. He is the the Digital Media Club sponsor, and he does a phenomenal job. So this was kind of an elongated version, but our morning announcements look like this every day. And they come to the the Promethean Boards via live stream. If you want to follow us, here's my ploy. If you want to follow us on YouTube, you can see the announcements. We also have a Facebook page, Instagram, and a TikTok dedicated just to Gustavo.
All right. Thank you again. Now we'll go to the administrative report, Superintendent Dr. Borne.
Good evening again, school board. This is my report for October 28, 2025. This week, we are fully engaged in state mandated ILEARN checkpoint testing. We want to congratulate Ms. Victoria Nares Reyes, who achieved a perfect ELA ILEARN checkpoint score. Let's give her a hand.
Yes.
And that is Ms. Padilla's student, one of our Harrison students.
Yes.
Thank you for allowing me the honor to announce that, Ms. Padilla. Attendance is one important link to better academic achievement and future success. Attending school every day on time guarantees there is no missed instruction and allows students to build confidence with the content and connect with peers and teachers. While the district has an average daily attendance of 94.36%, almost 95%, we want to acknowledge the students who have 100% perfect attendance. They show up every day, and they have zero tardies. And so we will not call the 444 names of these students, but we will rotate them through the slides. Let's give them a hand.
All right.
Locke had a total of 28 students with perfect attendance first quarter. Central had 99 students with perfect attendance. Lincoln had 44. McKinley had 66. Kerry Gosh had 15 students. Harrison had 84 students. And for the first quarter, Washington had 108 students with perfect attendance. Let's give all of our students a hand. The following instructors have completed successfully the Project Lead the Way Launch Teacher Training Program. Project Lead the Way is aligned with our strategic plan goal three for career pathways. This was a 16-hour virtual, hands-on collaborative course that provided our instructors with the required training needed to guide pre-K through fifth grade students during the PLTW course. Project Lead the Way is currently being implemented at our middle school, as well as and prepares them for student careers in engineering at the high school. If we have any Project Lead the Way teachers in the audience or who completed the course, will you please stand? That would be you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you. We also want to recognize Kerry Gosh Early Learning Center, who earned a perfect score on their Indiana State Path Quality Visit on Monday, October 27.
Okay, all right.
And October is National Principal Appreciations Month, Principal's Appreciation Month. And we have seven dedicated leaders who are responsible for our 3,200-plus students every day, who lead their staff buildings. And I always say, outside of the teacher who is on the front line, the second hardest job is that of the building school principal. We'd like to ask our building principals in the audience to please stand. Our fall sports season has concluded, with the exception of varsity football. The cross-country team participated in the sectionals on Saturday, October 18th. At Highland, the boys' team finished 11 out of 17 teams. Let's give cross-country a hand. Elementary volleyball is underway in its second week of games. Elementary sports is part of the school city's East Chicago's vision for developing our sports from kindergarten through 12th grade. Upcoming events for the week of October 27, 2025. Friday, October 31st, the semifinal sectional football, Cardinals versus Lowell at 7:00 p.m. Our boys' football provided an exciting opening sectional game with the 58-56, three-overtime victory over Highland on Friday, October 24th. Let's give the football team a hand. Huge shout out to our student athletes and our coaches for securing their first postseason victory since 2018. Please come out and support our varsity football team this Friday. Kickoff is at 7:00, and spectators will be charged $8 at the gate. So there is a mission for all spectators, since this is a state tournament. Our winter sports schedules are published. We encourage everyone to please check our new athletic website. We have shared them with all of our board members, and there is a limited amount available at tonight's meeting. Please see Athletic Director Gordon. We had well over 65 attendees at our Come Out and Meet the Superintendent event held last Wednesday at the McDonald's Indianapolis Boulevard. Every school was represented, including principals, teachers, and staff. I want to acknowledge our media team for their hard work. Ms. Alvarez, Ms. Totores, and Ms. Lopez for coordinating the effort with our partners at McDonald's. Let's give them a hand. And finally, I want to remind Cardinal Nation of the East Chicago Legacy School Seat Campaign. We have partnered with East Chicago Central Alumni Association and I2Sting American Organization to raise funds to replace and restore the seating in the Leon Kendrick Auditorium at Central High School. The deadline is December 31st, and the cost is $300. Please see Ms. Alexander or Ms. Darden to take your seat in history.
Yes.
And Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Borne. Now we'll go to the consent agenda. Are there any comments from the public about the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item five.
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by trustee Taylor. Are there any questions from the board? Now we go, Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor. Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Now we go to new business. Six point 01, Discussion and Proposal of Infinity System Strategic Plan Alignment Assessment. Are there any questions from the audience? Yes.
37 Alder, I just have a quick question. I did see the presentation was a great presentation from Infinity. But I just wondered, do we still have Panorama? If we're still paying for Panorama, are we using it? And how does Panorama compare to what you're looking at in the new company? And I know the whole, one of the important pieces is to establish data. So that would be your baseline data for your new plan. But if you have Panorama and it meets those same needs, you got historical data, you'll get baseline data for the new administration, and then you can monitor going forward. So I just wonder if we have it, are we using it, and how does it compare to what you're looking at?
Can I get a motion? Madam President, I make a motion to approve. You want some discussion? Okay, we, okay, just discussion, okay. All right then, so now, so we don't have to vote on this yet.
Okay.
So now we go to six point 02, Approve a Professional Development Request. Are there any questions from the audience? Oh, I'm sorry. You wanted to say something, trustee Rodriguez?
Not at this time, Madam President.
Okay. So, are there any questions from the audience about, as far as 6.03?
6.02.
I'm sorry, 6.02. Can I get a motion? Motion made by Trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by Trustee Smith. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please. Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Now we'll go to 6.03, Approve of Second Reading, Approve of Second Reading for Policies, PO 5410, which is Promotion, Replacement and Retention, and PO 9120, Public Information Program. PO 3120, Employment of Professional Staff, and PO 0100, Definition. PO 2700, Annual Performance.
Madam President?
Yes, Trustee Taylor.
I would like to make a motion to approve this Agenda Item 6.03 with an amendment of removing PO 3120, Employment of Professional Staff.
Removing, PO 3120, you said?
Yes.
And what else, Trustee Taylor?
That was it.
Okay. So, are there any questions from the audience?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, well, okay, well, Trustee Rodriguez second the motion, and Trustee Smith. Okay. So, can I get a, I mean, roll call?
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes. On the, I'm sorry.
With the exception of.
With the amendment.
Yeah.
With the exception of.
Removing, yeah.
Yeah. With the exception of 3120. Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Now we go to 6.04, Approve of Personnel Report. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion to approve 6.04?
Madam Secretary, Madam President, I make a motion to approve item 6.04, Approval Personnel Report.
Motion made by Trustee Rodriguez. Second. Second by Trustee Smith. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Now we go to 6.05, Approve of Resolution 2025-01, Public Censor of School Board Member Jesse Gomez. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion?
Madam President, before we do that.
Yes.
I wanted to give just a brief overview, so that there's some background before we go forward.
Yes.
So, as you all may recall, at the last public board meeting, there was a recommendation made by Trustee Taylor for the public censure of Trustee Gomez, based upon certain activities and behavior that he had exhibited. I provided the advice to the board that we couldn't take action on that recommendation at that meeting, because we needed to afford an opportunity to present the details of the allegations to him, an opportunity to respond, and prepare a resolution, should the board want to go forward, for final action, which is on the agenda for today. Yesterday, an executive session was held where we presented those allegations to Trustee Gomez, and he was afforded an opportunity to respond during that executive session. And he's also been provided with an opportunity to respond during today's public board meeting. And as you can see, he is not in attendance today. One of the requirements of the censure process, which is a parliamentary procedure process, requires that the resolution be read into the record. Because the resolution was recommended by Trustee Taylor, just asking that she read that into the record. There's also been a written response provided by Trustee Gomez, which will be part of the minutes. But obviously, he's elected not to be present to do that himself. So, I would ask Trustee Taylor to proceed with reading the resolution.
Thank you, Attorney Harris. Yeah, Trustee Taylor.
The Board of Trustees of the School C W Chicago Resolution Number 2025-6. Resolution for the censoring of Board Member Jesse Gomez for conduct inconsistent with board policy, board governance standards, and the best interest of the district. Whereas, the Board of School Trustees, Board of the School C W Chicago District, is charged by law with providing for the successful and orderly operation of the district, including ensuring that board members conduct themselves in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity, transparency, and effectiveness of the board. And whereas, the Board has adopted and is bound by various bylaws, policies, and codes of ethic standards of conduct, including but not limited to Policy Number 9150, School Visitors, Policy 0143.1, Public Expression of Board Members, and Policy 4112, Board Staff Communication, which collectively require board members to receive proper authorization, as well as provide notification prior to entry of School City of E Chicago Central Build, I'm sorry, School C W Chicago Buildings, in order to protect students and ensure guidelines are properly followed; two, refrain from conduct that disrupts district operations, specifically concerning receiving board approval before making public comments representing the viewpoints of the board; and three, respect the role of the superintendent and district administration when communicating with employees other than the superintendent of the School C W Chicago. And whereas, it is the duty of each board member to model professional conduct for students, staff, and the community, to avoid undermining district administration and staff in public or private communications, and to avoid actions which jeopardize the orderly governance of the district. And whereas, the Board recognizes that disagreement, dissent, and debate are a normal and expected part of democratic governance, but that such disagreement, dissent, and debate must occur within the boundaries of law, board policy, and the norms of civil, ethical, and professional conduct. And whereas, the Board further recognizes that when an individual board member's conduct departs from those boundaries, the Board has both the authority and the responsibility to respond, including through formal act of censor, in order to protect the district's effective governance and to affirm expectations for future conduct. And whereas, following review and deliberation during an executive session held on October 27, 2025, in which Board Member Jesse Gomez was given the chance to respond to the following breaches of conduct, the Board has determined that Board Member Gomez has engaged in conduct that is inconsistent with the standards expected of a board member, specifically including but not limited to the following. Number one, finding failure, sorry, finding one, failure to comply with Board Policy 9150, School Visitors, on or about October 2, 2025. Board Member Gomez entered East Chicago Central High School without first notifying the superintendent or receiving prior authorization. This is in direct contradiction with PO 9150. Such actions exceeded the proper role of an individual board member, interfered with administrative operations, and created confusion regarding the chain of command and event coordination authority within the school. Finding number two, failure to comply with Board Policy 0143.1, Expression, Public Expression of Board Members, on or about October 11, 2025. An announcement that the district was canceling a service field trip to Chicago. Board Member Gomez made public comments on social media, as well as to local reporters criticizing the district, as well as Superintendent Bornet, cancellation of the trip. PO 1, PO 0143.1 requires board members to clarify that their statements and actions do not represent the official position of the board unless authorized by a majority vote. Thus, a Board Member Gomez received no such authorization. He is in violation of PO 0143.1. Finding number three, failure to comply with Board Policy 4112, Board Staff Communication, on or about October 2, 2025. Board Member Gomez engaged in direct communication with one or more district employees regarding the service field trip to Chicago to increase the support for such a trip without prior coordination through the superintendent or designee. In violation of established board policy and district's governance model, such conduct undermines the superintendent's authority to manage day-to-day operations, place staff in an untenable position between conflicting directives, and disrupts the integrity of the district's administrative chain of command. Whereas, in addition to the above referenced findings, the Board also notes that the Board Member Gomez has exhibited multiple instances of failing to adhere to general best school board practices. During the inception and eventual cancellation of the service field trip to Chicago, Board Member Gomez engaged in actions inconsistent with the best practices and governance standards expected of a member of the Board School of Trustees, including but not limited to independently planning a or promoting a school-related event or field trip without appropriate coordination or authorization through the superintendent or designated agent. Such conduct reflects a disregard for the collaborative and oversight-based role of the Board, lurs the separation between governance and management, and risks confusion among staff, students, and community members regarding the proper channels for planning and approving district activities. Whereas, the Board believes that such conduct, both individually and collectively, has interfered with the orderly conduct of public meetings, distracted from the district's core mission of educating students, consumed disproportionate administrative time and resources, exposed the district to potential legal and reputational risks, and impaired the Board's ability to function as an effective governing body. Whereas, former censor is recognized parliamentary and governance remedy through which a public body may publicly reprimand one of its members for conduct deemed improper and unethical, or contrary to the body's rules, while also placing that member on notice that future violations may warrant additional remedial action with the scope of the Board's lawful authority. And whereas, the Board acknowledges that a resolution of censure does not remove an elected board member from office, does not prevent that board member from voting, and does not by itself limit that board's members statutory rights, but it does constitute the Board's official public statement of disapproval of identified conduct and Board's formal directive for corrective behavior going forward. And whereas, the Board acknowledges the importance of due process, transparency, and fairness in addressing matters involving a sitting board member, and therefore affirms that Board Member Jesse Gomez shall be provided the opportunity to respond to the findings contained in this resolution, either in writing submitted to the Board or verbally during the designated public comment period of the meeting at which the resolution is considered consistent with board policy and applicable law. And whereas, the Board desires to place these findings into the public record, both to maintain transparency with the community and to reaffirm of the Board's expectations for professional, ethical, and policy-compliant conduct from all sitting board members. It is therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of the School C W Chicago, with the full support of its superintendent, to hereby formally and publicly censor Board Member Jesse Gomez for the conduct described in Finding 1, Finding 2, Finding 3, and any other information contained herein and is set forth above, and declares that such conduct is inconsistent with the standards of conduct, ethics, professionalism, and governance expected of a board member of the School C W Chicago Board of Trustees. Number two, the clauses contained in this resolution, including Finding 1, Finding 2, and Finding 3, as well as general failure to adhere to the best practices of a school board member, are thus hereby incorporated into and adopted as the Board's findings of fact and conclusions in support of this resolution of censure. Number three, the Board directs Board Member Gomez to immediately cease and refrain from engaging in conduct that A violates or disregards duly-adopted board bylaws, policies, rules of order, or meeting procedures; B disrupts or delays the orderly conduct of board meetings and governance of the School C W Chicago; C improperly attempt to direct or supervise direct employees outside of board-approved processes and without board authorization; D undermine the authority of the superintendent in day-to-day operations. Number four, the Board places Board Member Gomez on notice that any future conduct of a similar nature or any violation of board policy, standards of conduct, meeting rules, confidentiality requirements, or directives contained in this resolution may result in additional board action. Number five, the Board directs that the resolution of censure be, A, read into the record at the October 28, 2025, regular meeting of the Board; B, entered into the official meeting minutes; and C, maintaining the permanent records of the Board and made available to the public, consistent with applicable law. Number six, nothing in this resolution shall be construed as a waiver of any legal right, claim to defense, privilege, or immunity held by the district, the Board collectively, or any individual board member acting in their official capacity. The Board expressly reserves all such rights. It is further resolved that Board hereby declares this resolution of censure to be its final action regarding the conduct described hereon unless and until additional information or future conduct warrants further review. And this resolution shall serve as both a public expression of the Board's disapproval and reaffirmation of its commitment to uphold the highest standards of governance, professionalism, and integrity expected of all board members. And it is future resolved that following the conduct described herein and pursuant to the Board's authority to determine committee appointments, Board Member Jesse Gomez shall no longer serve on the Board Policy Committee effective immediately upon adoption of this resolution. It is further resolved that Board Member Jesse Gomez shall be required to attend a Governance and Ethics Advisory Training Session on October 30, 2025, as directed by the Board. Proof of attendance and completion shall be provided to the Board President and recorded in official minutes of the next regular board meeting following the session. It is further resolved that the Board encourages all members, including Board Member Gomez, to move forward in a constructive and cooperative manner to focus on the educational mission of the School C W Chicago and to restore and maintain the trust and confidence of the students, staff, community, whom the Board collectively serves. It would is whereof, we have electronically affixed our names as the Board of Trustees and the Superintendent of the School C W Chicago this 28th day of October, 2025.
Thank you, Trustee Taylor. Madam President.
Yes.
At this time, we need to take public comment.
Yes. Are there any public comments from the audience? There are none. So, is there a... Can I get a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve 6.05, Approval of Resolution 2025-01. Did that be 06?
Yes, 6.0.
Okay.
Should be what now? Yes. Okay, motion made by Trustee Taylor.
Second.
Second by Trustee Smith. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. And now we'll move to 6.06, Administrative Salary Schedule, 2425. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion for 6.06?
Madam President, I make a motion for 6.06.
Motion made by Trustee Smith.
Second.
Second by Trustee Taylor. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
No. And now we go to our public forum.
If you've signed up to speak, if you could, please step to the podium, grab the microphone, so that you can be heard online and also by all the audience members present. State your name and your address. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. Please be respectful of the audience, of the staff, and the board members present. Lastly, please refrain from discussing any individual personnel matters. Thank you.
Good evening, First Speaker, we have Ms. Helen Steinbach.
Oh, Helen.
Good evening, Helen Steinbach, 52070, 73rd Avenue in Marraville, Indiana. I'm here tonight to say thank you to the superintendent and the negotiations team from administration. We were able to reach a tentative agreement, and our membership voted on it Monday night. And they have accepted the tentative agreement. And we look forward to have it be presented to the School Board at a future date upcoming. Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Taiki O'Wright.
Good evening. Taiki O'Wright, Admin Building is my address. And, you know, yeah, because I'm there all the time. And, you know, yeah, because I'm there all the time. So, I just come with a comment. And my comment is, I just want to say that, you know, a lot of people watch the school board meetings, and, you know, they call and they comment. Can you hear me? Okay.
No, we can't.
A lot of people call, and they call the administration building with their comments and things, and, you know, I answer the phone, and I try to be as polite as I can be, you know? And I listen to what they have to say. I do. So, and I let them talk. And I say, oh, okay, you know? But my comment is just to say that we value everyone's voice and input. However, please be mindful and remember that we should always remain respectful of others and focus on the issues and not the individuals. By maintaining and having a considerate tone, we set a good example for our students and strengthen our school community. We have a lot of people, like I said, watching, and when you think they aren't, they are. So, please be mindful so we can set examples for the children we want to be first. That's it.
Thank you.
That concludes our public comment for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. So now, we're going to have trustees' remarks. Trustee Taylor.
All right. Well, good evening once again. Just want to quickly acknowledge and congratulate Ms. Padilla and her team on this amazing presentation. These are the results when you create those type of spaces and provide those tools and resources to the children and pull those talents out of them. And just to watch them flourish, it's an amazing opportunity. So, yeah, I'm so excited to see how that's going to integrate with the CTE program. So, great job, and continue the good work in engaging your students in the growth of your school. Also, I just wanted to acknowledge that I attended the play at Central High School the other day, over the weekend, actually, 18 Ways to Screw Up Your College Interview. Yeah. It was humorous. It was flawless. The kids truly flourished in their gifts, and the support from their family, to see the support from their families, it was truly amazing. So, great job to the kids and Mr. Dunzo. Also, Dunzel, sorry. Also, it has been a great season for Cardinal Athletics. We've celebrated multiple sectional wins and record-breaking athletes shining bright across our district. Now, I'll be honest, the only thing I really understand about football is touchdown, but I was there on Friday night, and I saw plenty of those, and it was an exhilarating experience. So, great job to the teams. What a story to tell and what a lesson to learn. When they thought it was almost over, they locked arms as a team, and they pushed through. So, that's the spirit of perseverance that we want in our students and ourselves to carry our district forward. A huge thank you to my fellow Cardinal alumnis for stepping up and taking care of all of our fall sport teams by feeding them right before the games. We can't come up here, you know, a lot of alumnis come up here to the school board meetings, and they share their opinions, but one thing I could say about the alumni is that they put their money where their mouth is, so with their hearts, and they are givers. So, I thank you, alumni, and I'm proud to be a Cardinal. A special shout-out to Mr. Young Man Julian Castaneda for being an incredible manager for our Block Middle School football team. Also, a special thanks to his father, Mr. Ray Castaneda, for making sure those boys were fed right before every game or after every game, I believe. So, that's community, that's pride, and that's E Chicago. So, we could come up here and make our statements and share our opinions, but again, we put our money, or we'll put our mouth where our money is, whatever, how that goes. Y'all know what I mean. I said a lot tonight. So, shifting, you know, now shifting to tonight's decision, while that was never easy, they remind us that accountability begins with us as a board. We are to set the standard through our actions, not just our words. Mistakes are forgivable when faced with the courage to admit them. That's one of my favorite quotes. I'll be the first to say, I'm not perfect. I will fail you one day. But one thing about me, if you take the time to get to know me, is that you'll see that I'm going to own mine, and I'm going to own up to it. So, I agree with the comment that trustee Rodriguez made last week, or the last meeting. We cannot continue to put obstacles in front of each other, stand back, watch someone fall, to only throw the rulebook at that person. That's not leadership, and that's not a good look for our board. We have to remember our why, our children, and the incredible individuals we've entrusted to educate and nurture them. When we keep them at the center, everything falls into place. And finally, I want to say this. People often make mistake, may mistake my willingness to work with someone I may not always agree with as being weak-minded, and it's not. It's called being professional. Disagreements don't need to turn into disrespect. We can be strong, stand firm in our beliefs, and still work together with grace. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Taylor. So, we'll go to trustee Rodriguez.
Again, I want to thank Harrison for doing such a great presentation. And it's one of those things where, you know, sometimes the decisions that you make or what you do in life, you have to face up to those decisions that you make. It'll come back to you. And I think with, in this situation, it's sort of a, it was a tough decision to make, but my purpose and my integrity of this board is to make sure that we take E Chicago to a more national level and really bring E Chicago out into a national spotlight. As Chair of the Cube, and I think we've been doing such a great job, I want to thank the superintendent for being so supportive and for his breakout sessions and keynotes that he's done as far as helping this district get to that level. We still have a lot to go. We still have to come together, and we're still going to meet obstacles. We have to overcome those obstacles. We have to face those problems head-on. We don't need board members to create those obstacles, but it's going to take all of us as a team to making sure that we get to that next level. The next level is the success and achievement of our students. So, the decision was tough. However, in order to maintain the integrity of this board, we have to put our feet down, and that's basically what we did today. And again, Friday, I believe we're getting to the final weeks of football. I will be at Friday's game, and I look forward to seeing community members, faculty, staff, anyone who would like to come to the game on Friday, because it's going to be an amazing experience. Thank you.
Trustee Smith?
I want to say, that the baseball...
Who can't hear you?
I just want to say congratulations to the football teams, well, the athletic department, period. From the little bitty people to the seniors. I didn't make it to the football game. I'm a little older. I can't stand, I can't stand the cold, sorry. Now, with the basketball team, I'm the number-one supporter, okay? But it's been an amazing week, and I'm really, really proud to be a Cardinal. And I just want to congratulate Ms. Padilla with her excellent presentation. I thought when you, when it came on, it really was a CNN news special. I mean, that was just very, very unique. And you did say something that you had a garden.
Yes.
So, when you have your garden, expand it, and then sell your vegetables. So, that's just an idea. But I just want to say, I'm very proud to be a school board member, but I do have something I would like to say, and this is not toward anyone, it's just something that needs to be done, and it needs to be said. So, I'm going to read it. "To the Board President and Members of the School Board and the Superintendent, October 28, 2025. Subject: Request for Special Session Title I Application Presentation." That was supposed to be on our agenda today. I don't know what happened, and that's not my business, but I just know that it needs to be done. So, my letter is saying, "Dear Boy President and Members, I am requesting that a special session be scheduled next week with no exceptions to allow Ms. Hope, our Title I Coordinator, to present a comprehensive update regarding the Title I application process. This presentation should include an overview of the application's current status, any pending submissions, compliance requirement, and timelines for completion. Given the importance of the Title I funding to our district and to the need for the clarity and transparency in this process, I believe that it is essential that the Board and the community hear from Ms. Hope. Her expertise and direct involvement will help ensure that all questions are answered and that we are aligned in meeting state and federal expectations. I ask that the special session be scheduled at the earliest possible date to avoid delay in funding or program implementations. All administration, principals, and any other person requiring funding and grants from Title I through Title IV should be at this meeting as well, with no exception. Madam President, could you please pick a date? But it needs to be held next week as soon as possible. If this meeting does not take place, President, can you, if this meeting does not take place next week, all repercussions will fall directly on you, the superintendent, because you are her supervisor, her superior. Thank you for your prompt attention to this request and your continued commitment to our students and our community. Dr. Bernay, do you really realize and understand that our district are calling and asking for what's going on? This is no intention to defame anybody, it's just something that our community needs to know. Thank you.
Dr. Bernay, do you have anything to say?
No, I do not have anything.
Thank you. Thank you all. I'm going to expound on what trustee Smith had to say about our title dollars. And me as being Board President and the Board of Trustees, when we first heard about this, I called for an emergency meeting, and I did this October 30, I believe, but we had the meeting October 8. To me, it was an emergency because we have been trying to get some understanding as to what's going on with our title dollars. I don't think this has never happened in our school district, never ever. This has never happened. And we're not getting any understanding as to what's going on. We keep asking, Dr. Bernay. I thought that the individual that's on the agenda would be here tonight to explain some of this, but as you can see, they're not here. They are on the agenda. I just found out at the school board meeting when I came that this individual was not going to be present. So, we also have several titles. We have the big title, Title I. We have Title IV. We have Title II, Title IV, Title III. There are some questions about these dollars, and we're not getting any answers. And I would thought that the superintendent would have liked to have said something when I asked of him, that is anything that he would have liked to have said, but he has some comment. So, I mean, with what trustee Smith had to say, I am going to call for a special meeting, and it's going to be for November 1. It will be at Central, pardon? Yes, everybody's off. Everybody will be even on that day. It's very important. November 1, it'll be at Central High School at 1 o'clock. Everybody, though, everybody that this is effective is going to affect. Now, those ones that don't think it's going to affect them, then, like you say, have it Saturday? Yes, so, pardon? Oh, well, what time? Say what now? Yeah, what time is that? Oh, yeah, well, we'll make some kind of accommodations, you know, but right now, it's going to be Saturday, because like I said, we have been waiting for answers for a long period of time. And these dollars, from my understanding, they should have been applied for September 16. We're now going into November, going until November. And it's very crucial that we get some kind of understanding as to what is going on or what needs to be did. So, now I would like to...
I'm sorry. Madam President?
Yes.
I did decline comment after the trustee Smith, as well as trustee Gibson King. It has been, it is by no way to imply that this matter isn't important. Ms. Stovall, Director of Federal Rast Field Administration, did have a medical emergency. As you are aware, as the Board may be aware, though, public may not, originally, Ms. Stovall was asked to present to the Board during a work session. And I believe, without having breached any type of confidentiality regarding HIPAA, that appointment was rescheduled for her to present at the work session. When the Board decided to have her present at the work, so tonight's board meeting, she rescheduled that appointment, not knowing the next appointment would be tonight. Originally, she was going to be available during the work session, which was last Thursday.
Thank you, Dr. Bernay, but, yes, go ahead, trustee Smith.
Okay. I always own up to what I say. I'm not one to back down. I've come too far. I've been in this, on this board for six, almost seven years. I've never seen our district in a disarray, especially financially. We've always been in the black. We've never had this situation. I'm not downing anybody. So, when I, when they, when Dr. Bernay asked that the Title I person speak at the workshop, the work session, it was okay. I had no problem with that. But the work session was, it is televised, but to me, to me personally, as a E Chicagoan, a Cardinal, and a taxpayer, when we have work sessions, questions are asked from the Board. The community cannot respond. They could only watch the work session. They will not be able to ask a question, so they kind of leave them in limbo. So, me personally, I suggested that not only just Ms. Hope, but Ms. Broadnicks, to come to the work session so that everybody could ask all the questions as a board, so that when the presentation came, that she would be prepared, or they would be prepared for their presentation. Because watching a board session, you can't ask any questions. Don't ask me, because I don't know. So, that was my suggestion. Now, I'm not going to back down from what I said, because I felt that the community needs to know. Two sessions would not have hurt neither one. So, I'm not going to say I'm sorry, because I want my community to know. People are calling, their jobs are in limbo, we have people that don't know what to do, and a work session, that could have worked out, but then a board meeting would have been able to get the community and the teachers and the principals to ask the questions that they need to ask the Title I person, not me. So, no, I'm not going to say that I feel, that I feel bad because of that, no. I asked that we had sessions, both work session and public, so that we could be transparent, and clarity will be forwarded to our community so that we will know exactly which way we're going. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Smith. As the last school board meeting that we had, we talked with our CFO, Leela Simmons, and she gave us some kind of insight, best that she knew what was going on with these dollars. We asked of her. She gave us some insight. It was also mentioned at that time, we did mention that the person that who is responsible for this will be at the next school board meeting. Go back and check the record, okay? So, and me and the superintendent, we do do the agenda. She was put on the agenda. As you see now, do you have an agenda? As you see now, do you have an agenda? So the individual is on this agenda. And so, like me and Mrs. Smith and the rest of the board here, we're just trying to get some clarification, because, you know, as we know, we already have a government shutdown. You know, we have ICE is here. And so, and people are, you know, we got the benefits of SNAP is going to be coming to an end from what they say in November 1st. So whatever it is that we need to do to get ourselves in position, we need to know something right now. So this is why I'm calling this meeting for September 1st. It will be at 1 o'clock. If anything changes, then it would be... I'm sorry, November 1st. So if anything changes, it would be on the website, but it would be at Central High School. So now I would like to expound on Deborah Williams' Top 20 Dancing Mentoring Program that she has with her Top 20 girls. She had something Saturday, October 25, at Cary God School. I was there, as well as our Athletic Director, watching what she does with the Top 20 girls, as you already know. And she's been working, she has put a lot into this here, um, Top 20. You know, she's been doing things for a long time. And, um, she's trying to get a curriculum to include in with some of our programs that we have in school. And so, um, I was there with her. She has several things that she was doing Saturday. The fitness dance. She had the Horton Dance Technique. She had the hip-hop dance. And she had the Liberator Art. Each one of these courses, somebody different came in and performed with these girls. And it was really a nice thing that they were doing that day. Also, she was also part of our band music class that we have with Mr. Murphy. Now, working with our Athletic Director, Mr. Gordon, he has brought together other students, other students that's in our school with other curriculums. And I think this is a good idea to come together with other kids, doing other things, showcasing them together. This is something that I'm going to be working with, Mr. Gordon, to bring other students in our school, things that we need to see. Because if we don't see what they're doing, I would never know what they're doing. So I'd like to thank that what we are doing here together. Mr. A.D. Gordon, would you like to get up and say a word or two here? And let them know where we was at all Saturday and Friday?
Well, as Athletic Director, I started off, we went to the cross-country meet, okay? Watch Our Boys Run. We continued on. We had a group of our student athletes go over to the Breast Cancer Walk. We all supported that great event. We left the Breast Cancer Walk, and we went over to watch our band play at Ridge South High School. And they did a wonderful job, and we're just trying to continue to build off of that.
Thank you. And like Mr. Gordon said, we were at the Breast Cancer Work, that Stacy Winfield gives every year. It is a big event that she does, and it was really beautiful. And she's, I don't know how many years she's been doing it, but it is six years she's been doing this, and this has been a successful event. So that's what, we had that going on. We've had a lot of things going on in our community. And I want to say something about, um... Let's see. There was a group that did a protest on Indianapolis Boulevard about ICE. Okay, and these, from my understanding, it was some students that put this together. I don't have the name right now, but I do want to acknowledge those students for putting this together. I think it was on a Saturday that they did all of this, and the community came out. And I want to just thank them as well. And I have a card somewhere passing around for, I want us to keep Mrs. Marie Baker lifted up in prayer. She's in a rehab facility. It's in Hartford Rehabilitation Center Nursing Care, and it is that 503 Otis Boorman Drive in Munster. So I have the card, those of you that can sign it. I will put it in the mail. And I did go to visit with her when she was in St. Catherine's Hospital. Now, as you know, if you know Mrs. Baker, she has a strong mind, and she doesn't forget anything. She's a strong fighter. She's been in our school district for, I mean, many a years, I like to think. So I would just want you all to keep her lifted up in prayer. I don't think that I have missed anybody else. Oh, yeah, Mr. Bonier, this marching drum line, this was at a school you went to, Richardson Park? Is that your school? Yes, this is where we went to. Oh, and they did an excellent job. They did an excellent, excellent job. So, with that being said, I thank you, Mrs. Padilla, for your program that you put on, and Mrs. Brodnick. Thank you all. I want to thank you all for coming. Now, don't we look nice in our costumes up here? I like to have fun. Huh? Yeah, don't we look like crayons, right? Yes. Okay, so I'm going to...
We're just missing the black and brown one.
Yes, yes, Mercedes, yes. So with that being said, uh, I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Oh, the next meeting will be November 10, and it will be at the Administration Building at 6 o'clock. So I'd like to get a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Madam President, make a motion to adjourn.
Trustee Rodriguez is second by trustee Taylor. Thank you all. Oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
Trustee Smith? Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes, thank you all. Thank you all for coming.